There's a flag right here.
Flag by Daryl, flag in the corner.
The flag of allegiance is the flag of the United States of America. This is the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okey dokey, roll call. You wanna go through? Um, I'm here, Chairman Darlin. Vice Chairman Ray, you're here.
Yes, yes, I'm here.
Anita Straub.
I'm here.
And Howard is excused, James Turner is excused, Pam Ackerman. Larry Kiefer Corn has retired. And Daryl Nichols.
Present.
And Leroy Ziski.
Present.
Thank you. And we have a forum. Everybody get a chance to look at the agenda for today. Pretty simple and straightforward. Approved by Leroy and seconded by Pam. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion's carried. Um, everybody get a chance to read the minutes from the last meeting, go over them.
Yes, I believe on the motion that Doug made for, the solar, that he wanted to clarify that PA 116 is eligible solar development, not just the development, delete words in solar district. I read the F D A R D, PA 116 solar guidelines, which are statewide. And to him, it was to amend, not approve, of the solar ordinance as previously approved. So there's just some.
Clarifying.
Clarifying of words, yeah.
Well, I, I know there was some concern, but we had sent that solar array, just so people are understanding, we had sent that to the board for approval. They sent it back to us without approving it because someone had suggested that maybe there needed to be a solar overlay. So that was the purpose of the public hearing. Instead of adopting a solar array, since the ordinance had not been approved, we amended the ordinance to send it back to the board so that we didn't need a solar array. That's the way we chose to do it. I think that was the, the smart way to do it. And I believe that has been sent, it was sent to the county like the, uh, the ordinance says it needs to be done, even though there's, there's not a county planning commission anymore. So it should be back. I don't know if the board's gonna look at it next week or not, but.
No, because we had to get clarification first before I could send that to the county.
Okay. So that's fine. It still should be good. Anything else on the agenda or on the minutes from last meeting?
You just got it right from when I sent her back.
Alright. Well, if there's nothing else, then with the promotion.
Move to approve with the correction.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Alright. Doug moved to approve the minutes as amended. And seconded by Mr. Nichols. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. So. Alrighty. I guess that brings us to our first citizens' time. I see we have a citizen here. We have a couple in fact.
Yeah, uh, yeah, go right ahead, go right ahead.
My name's Jared Manor. I, uh, have a fifteen acre parcel over, um, Oki and Tuttleville. I guess we have the southeast corner. Um, what I'm approaching you guys for is, I've owned the property since two thousand and fifteen and I just recently here, uh, discovered, it wasn't in any of my paperwork when I purchased it, that the, uh, the property has an open, open space conservation easement on it. I was, I called everybody from state of Michigan all the way down, Anita's been helpful. But everything keeps coming back to the township because it was, uh, entered upon in two thousand and six from two orders ago. But yeah, I was just looking to see what I could do if it would be a possibility to get it removed from the open space conservation easement to, uh, you know, put a, I don't wanna split it or anything like that, but to make it available to put a home on.
It's alright, so it's under our open space, residential open space preservation, which was a township ordinance. And so it has a deed restriction on the property. And that was a deed restriction that whoever sold that property to you should have disclosed that.
Like I said, I had it for almost six years now, over six years now, and this was just brought to light to me here in the last two months.
Yeah, that, that was something that the, the title company and realtor should have disclosed that because what it means is.
Yeah, the title company's like really dropped the ball there.
You can't build on that, you can't split it.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah.
And I guess I was just, I understand I can't split it, don't wanna do that, but can it be removed? Can I remove it?
No, 'cause there was, at some point in time, whatever that parcel was, to give the building site, 'cause holds a house on that property that.
There isn't a house on it.
There isn't a house on it.
No, it's just making land.
Split?
It was, what it was, there was a, there was a five, it, it, everything was all chopped up in there years ago from my understanding. I think it was all under the same ownership at one point. But yeah, now essentially I have a kind of, not landlocked, I have an easement there with a piece of property that I can't really do much with and the easement, and the conservation easement, I, truthfully, I probably, if I would've known about it, I probably wouldn't have purchased the property because it's, uh, it's pretty strict.
Yeah, it is, it is, it's very restricted. You can't split it, you can't build on it, and you can't, you basically, it was the, the previous owner gave up the right of development on that property. It was their choice, their decision because they had to, it was to get them another split in order to get their splits on that parent parcel the way they wanted it. They gave up that portion of that, that way. And so whoever sold that to you, they, they were blatant by not telling you that there was a conservation easement on there, which restricts you from splitting it, building, et cetera on it, because that's the way that open space easement went on. And so that would be something, boy, if, I mean, I speak out to you here and talk to an attorney.
I, I've spoken with quite a few attorneys and most of them just give me a blank stare and say, "An open space, huh?"
Yeah.
Um, I have yet to, I've probably spoken with a dozen, and I have yet to find one that has even the slightest clue in the world what I'm talking about.
It's a restriction that the title company should have disclosed.
That's right. I would say the title company is the one, now, you know, somebody selling it, you know, it wouldn't be the first time in history they weren't honest.
Yeah.
But the title, the titling, you should be able to go back in your titling. Titling insurance.
One, one question.
Yes, sir.
Did you see it on your title? That was one of the problems. With some of the stuff we tell people, because we don't, we prove that they did a deed restriction, we allow them to do these things. Because in some respects, we're supposed to wait for them to get that deed restriction before they're really gonna approve. All the things with the ponds, they say can't split it. Well, they go right ahead and split it anyway because there's no deed restriction on that parcel. So I do, you know, I, I don't know where this might be, I'd have to check the heart treaty.
Okay.
Okay.
That's the only logical way to approach this.
I just happen to have a rough draft here. Was that, are you in section thirty-three?
I, that sounds familiar. Actually, I have a copy of the.
Section thirty-three, Township Five, South Range Seven, East London Township. And then west half of the southwest quarter. Was it the parcel originally owned, two orders ago, as you say, by Kathy Root?
Yes.
I'm holding on to the paperwork right here. A copy, it's, uh, uh, it was replaced on three, six, six, uh, two thousand and six for, for what this was in that they had gone through that route for splitting that off and using the residential open space. I was looking for my copy of the actual ordinance. This happened to be in the back of my book and I happened to see Kathy Root and I'm like, wait a minute, this is your number?
Survival open space, it's right here.
Yeah. Okay, it's in the book now, alright.
Doesn't that say it on the deed though?
Yeah, this, this should have been because this would have been signed and executed, uh, drafted by Bill Godfrey in Monroe. And, uh, it was approved by Tom Ready, who was the township attorney at that time, that was private Conley. And then the all-known Kathy Root. Survivor of Bill Root Junior. Frank Road. Final line, legal description, house legal, legal description for a house lot.
Uh, it kinda makes an L, but yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so they, they sold.
Pardon?
Is that parcel getting farmed today?
Mine?
Yes.
Uh, no, no, I just deer hunt on it right now.
Well, I'm just trying to picture where the property is, what I, I don't know that.
Yep.
What you said was which part of the road?
It would be the southeast.
Southeast. There's new houses going beside you.
Yep. And I guess that would be in front of me as well.
Now, my understanding was on that side of the road, there was a long strip of property that had frontage, but not much yet.
Um, on Oki, I know there was.
No, no, um.
Tuttleville, yes, yes.
On the east side.
Yeah, and there, there is, uh, there's corn on it right now. Yeah, it's long, it almost stretches the whole length of my, uh, property, but it's maybe thirty yards wide at that.
Right.
Yeah.
And so you are on the east side of F U truck.
Yep.
Thanks, thank you.
It's not like I got all these parcels. Yeah, see, there was, uh, three, four residential parcels created by making that fifteen acres. So we, we can't buy what this ordinance is. And it was, and the other thing is, is this ordinance was then challenged publicly and then approved by referendum in the township. It wasn't just that, we, the Township Planning Commission approved this and went through the process and some people thought all this was something that was benefiting farmers and all benefited the landowners and it minimized the amount of, uh, or you got your, you got the amount of homes, but instead of that entire parcel being split up and having homes splattered all over the place, they put the homes all in one area and then you preserve the balance of that. But I think there's about five or six of these that were done in the township that, uh, people have got. And so what it is, is all the development on that parcel have already been used.
Okay.
And so this, this comes back to your realtor, whoever that, that took care of that and then the title company, whoever executed that, that they didn't disclose to you that you cannot build on that property, you cannot do anything with it that way.
So just, 'cause I have to ask, there's not any chance of like leaving, you know, say ten acres of it in the conservation using five?
Because the, the property owner was granted this on there and it's supposed to be a deed restriction for perpetuity. And they left a thirty foot wide access to that back parcel. So you got a thirty foot easement that, or that's your.
Right through a giant hole.
Yeah. You know, that would, it would be a question for, for Bondi, or actually probably end up being a question for Conley, because Conley was the closest one for dealing with these things. Because Bondi hasn't had any of these things because he feels, her previous lifetimes, she dealt with a lot of the drain, codes of drain assessments and setting those up for the, the legal stuff. But this one is, is strictly an open space one and that the development rights have, you know, it says shall remain in an undeveloped state, which means natural, preserve, natural, natural features, scenic or wood conditions, agricultural use, open space, uh, or as a similar use or condition which does not include golf course, but which may include non-motorized recreational trail picnic area, children's play area, greenway, or linear park.
Okay. So then there's, so there's no way to, um, because that's how I had to appear with the amendments and appeals portion of it to come in front of you guys. Um, there's no way to do an amendment on that or?
No, we don't have, like I said, we don't have the authority to, to overrule this because it's a legal document. And the other thing is, is because it went through a public vote and I told, uh, oh, Johnson, she was state rep, they shepherd this bill through the state house, you gotta sign that. Oh, I'm drawing a blank. And she then went on to be Secretary of State.
Ruth.
Ruth Johnson. When I told her that we got challenged down here, she couldn't believe it. That we're the only place in the entire state that anybody challenged the Open Space Preservation Act. And so because we went through it and it won, then you have the act of the, the vote of the public. And boy, I don't think we have any chance of changing that whatsoever because it was a vote of the public on this situation. This, this is a whole different can of worms than just any other township.
That's what I discovered.
And the entire state.
Cracked into something that I didn't hope I'd ever have to crack into.
That's when I told Ruth that, she kind of looked at me sideways and said, "What are you talking about?" I explained.
You have your own land anyway, hopefully.
Oh, hold on, house is popping up in front of it. So that's the only unfortunate thing.
Despite dumb luck, I happen to have the actual computer. I hang, I hang on to everything. It's just ridiculous.
So, although it's new on all the side of the north side of your property.
Uh, yeah, it'd be the west side. Like, mine made the L around there, but yeah, all on the north side of a good portion of it.
Yeah, she could give them the, uh, opinion which might help him out for legal action on the realtor.
Sorry, we don't have better news.
It should have been.
I would say the title company somehow.
The title company and the realtor, which I don't know who the realtor would have been, that, who was the realtor you dealt with on there?
Uh, that was, uh, uncomfortable, we, and I had, it was a friend of mine. And a uncomfortable conversation.
Well, the title company's the one that should have brought it to the, to the realtors. I mean, I would think it would fall back to the title company not doing their job. Unless there's somebody's fault that it didn't get placed on the deed. So, I'm, I'm sorry, we.
Well, it had to be somewhere, it unlocked because he'd come across it, so it had to been in the deed somewhere.
So, um, it was actually given me with threat of lawsuit, for potentially thinking about building something back there by, uh, another owner in the area. And, uh, apparently he got it from the Monroe County, uh, deeds office. And handed it to me and I said, "I've never seen this document in my life."
Yeah.
I read over all stuff when I'm signing things.
Well, if it came from the registered deeds office, it is the title company's fault.
The title company and the realtor, but on the same note, because I know people who have gone to buy a parcel and they thought they're gonna build a home and do this and that, and they're about to go to closing and then they happen to be reading through it and they find that there's a pipeline that transverses the property, splits the thing in half. You don't have enough space on the back or the front to build a home or the size of the home that they wanted. And you know, the day of the closing, they backed off it because the guy who was buying it actually read his paperwork and found that pipeline easement sliced right across there. And you gotta have so much setback from these gas pipelines that, you know, he almost spent a lot of money on a piece of parcel up north near a lake that, or on a lake and come to find out you couldn't build on it. That's why.
Sir, so, I mean, you should, because the neighbor found out about your property, I think you should go to the registered deed and have them search and give you copies of that.
Okay.
Which you're allowed to do, I mean, I'm allowed to go to a, so that's how that person found out.
Go down with your, your parcel number and what you want is the parcel numbers of the other parcels all the way around it. Because like I say, there was five building sites created off that fifteen acre open space.
Okay.
So essentially, the house that could have been built on your fifteen acres has already been built. Or it's, or it's available on one of the other lots. I don't know if all the homes were built or not.
No, there's still a couple vacant lots there.
Okay, so then if you were able to buy one of those, then you'd have access, better access to your property and be able to build there. But the way this thing sets, we don't have the ability because of the vote of the public on the thing. But like I say, for your legal package, you go to your realtor and you go to the, the title company. And the title company said, "We told the realtor and the realtor didn't pay it." No.
So unfortunate.
Leroy gave you some good advice.
Yeah.
I appreciate it.
Go get what you can down there and everything else.
Mainly because you don't wanna go get an attorney and spend another three, four hundred dollars talking to them.
Yeah.
And find out all they're gonna do is put down and pull it, something out of the deed and say, "Oh." With that information, now you can go attack whoever owned the previous, if you want to.
Okay. So I guess just to wrap it up, I know you said you guys don't have the authority to prove it. Is there anybody that does? Or is it just one of those things that, once it's done, it's done? Yeah.
You can give him a copy of, I think it's eleven, page eleven, S seven, in, um, in a book, which kind of explains that piece of, on open space.
I'm here. Can you make a copy? Can you make me one too? Because I was actually thinking about getting a piece of land that you just, uh, I can keep it.
Alright, anything else for citizens' time? Alright, if not, let's go on to unfinished business. Number one, Article Five. Five point six oh eight.
Here, my notes, what, how you spell your last name?
Uh, Manor, M A N O R.
Okay, alright, that's, yeah, part correct.
What was your first name?
Jared, J A R R E T T.
So. Alright, I know it's been a while since we talked about this ordinance. We've been through it, it got changed and we've been kind of back through it again. How do we want to proceed here?
Oh, I know one of the sticky points, and I think the sticky point was that, that, uh, any volume greater than three hundred cubic yards per, and I know it's got parcel on there, and we changed that to acre.
Right.
And I don't believe that there was enough communication between the planning commission and the township board, especially in August of twenty twenty.
Right.
To, um, make everybody aware of exactly what that meant when it come to, uh, a real life scenario. That's, that's my thoughts on it and, you know, three hundred cubic yards, if you've got, you know, uh, low ground and acre, which is what, forty-five thousand and something forty feet? I mean, what's that, what's that gonna raise that acre, you know, when you talk three hundred cubic yards? Any inch?
Doug had the map.
Yeah, I had that map.
So. My point to that at the time was, it can, you can change it to two hundred or three hundred, you can change it to whatever. The rule always still stands is that the water has to stay on your property.
That's right.
So if you're pushing water onto your neighbor's property that didn't ordinarily go there.
That's right.
You're in trouble if you only put a hundred cubic yards there.
If you put thirty on there.
That's the point. So the point, the point was, and, and maybe we, like you said, didn't spend enough time explaining that. That, you know, it truly comes back to, um, water has its natural flow. And you can build your property up and do whatever, but you can't build your property up so the water out of your property runs onto the neighbors where it need, never had trouble. And so the three hundred was a number that was come up. It's, you know, six train loads, five train loads, where we figure.
Yeah, and well, a train load would be about fifty yards.
Okay. So it'd be six, six train loads, and it seems like a lot. Maybe we should have. You know, I, I thought that the common sense, because I remember being part of the discussion before I was chairman.
That, that number, whatever it is, is irrelevant.
Is irrelevant because the moment you start putting water over on your neighbor who didn't used to go to your neighbor, you're hurting anyway.
You're, you are in violation.
And there is case law that supports that, and it's right here, Jimin versus Washington County, I think about nineteen sixty-four. And that it's been upheld many, many times that you cannot pour water on your neighbor.
So, so the whole thing, if somebody owns five acres and they wanna build something up to, you know, to have more grass for more of the kids to be able to play ball. We wanted to be able to do that. Now, maybe we should have capped it at, at ten acres or five acres or something so that somebody could buy a hundred acres and all in, you know, I don't know what the question was. Go ahead, Leroy.
Should that be stated in here somewhere? It's that, it's something so long. But we should, like, figure out what the long number is.
I mean.
This, uh, do not.
Yeah, you're right, please. Well, you're right.
I understand that there's more stuff to look at.
Right.
I figured. Somehow that has to be protected. When people look at this, they're saying, "Well, this is stupid." They're right. The reason why it's stupid is we don't want to come with water on somebody else's property.
Right.
Possibly we should document that in here.
I, if, if that's what needs to be done, I, I've got no problem with that. I, obviously, we need to work through and make sure everybody understands it.
So if you look in this ordinance in, um, I guess paragraph eight, number two, it says site grading and drainage water collection is supposed to be separate agricultural activities shall be unlawful for any person to change the drainage pattern of any land by excavating, grading, or filling without first obtaining a permit for construction from the township. So, I, I mean, it's addressed in there. And before that, it speaks to, uh, an engineer signing off on that. So.
Well, if like, any sort of, even if it's like a new backfill, and I bring in two yards or two.
Yeah.
Say a hundred yards or something like that, or something, my neighbor's planning.
Right, right, and, and that speaks to it.
That's works good.
Right there. I mean, we, we spoke about this. Some nauseous.
In the summer of twenty twenty.
Yes, yes.
Now, the question is, with this, we're looking at, uh, we never really got to the township.
Oh, they did get to the township board.
Got sent back to the concern about buying that.
That three hundred cubic yards. That three hundred cubic yard. Okay. So it came back to us, then I believe our, uh.
Kind of.
Helper, helper at the time went through and changed it up. I, I think we're pretty good here if we can explain this.
Yeah. I'll be doing the explaining.
I mean.
It's, it's all in this ordinance.
Uh, that steps back a little bit to me after we do a public hearing or anything.
We've done a public hearing.
We've done.
Yeah, it's already been done.
Okay, we didn't do a public hearing on, but the one that, uh, what's it, they brought before us, correct?
Well, the thing is, is none of them were put out in public, and none of them were read out loud in the public.
Understand, that's my question.
Yeah.
I was quite sure the answer is no, I want everybody to agree, the answer is no.
We, we've had a public hearing for fill ordinance, and that's what the ordinance was to do, is do we need one? That's, that's where the change, the way Leroy, you and I look at is, we write up an ordinance and we put it out to the public for them to, you know, give an opinion on.
Right.
This, we never, the, the way the process got turned around, Kirsty and McKenna Associates, you know, turn, you know, you and I, we agreed. We had to do these public hearings at the end and let the public say, hey, this is a good ordinance, this is not right, you're missing this. And then we can go back if they, they make a case. This situation, you have a public hearing to decide, do you need an ordinance or not? It's not what it is, it's just, do you need one for fill? Do you need one for, you know, paved driveways? You need, uh, you know, should we have an ordinance for this or that? And then once the public hearing's done, the public says yes or no, then you move ahead with developing an ordinance.
The other way, we could develop whatever we wanted to pass the township board, and I probably couldn't say, or we're the law.
Yeah, the way it is right now.
That's true.
You know, it's, I, I think this process is backwards, and so when we go through to amend the ordinance, this is the next time around. We can double check with the state in case there's something that has changed up there.
Right.
Why this process got poked in here, but like I said, you and I.
I think that, to be honest, if you remember, there was a Westland, or there was a, remember?
It was West Blutefield Hills.
West Blutefield Hills popped up in the ordinance from time to time.
Yes.
And so I think that is a charter township, and that might be the way the charter townships work.
Yeah, that could be.
And that has always been my opinion on some of these areas.
Cause when we went through, cause they had that.
Good sense, right? Yeah.
They had one on, they had a portion of livestock under our ag, and they had a square footage minimum for a, a pen for an animal. Now, I calculated that, what we, half of it is illegal in the township, which has been the best thing ever happened to the dairy industry. And so I pressed them very hard, they were sitting there, where did you come up with this ordinance? And they answered, well, they wouldn't tell us, they couldn't, they said, from Michigan State, who, where, what division? And they never did, and it wasn't till when we got farther deeper into that book, that I was like, you saw something on Oakland County? And then when I saw West Bluteville Township, they're not a farm in West Bluteville Township for fifty years.
When I read what they did with this, that's why.
We're reminiscing here.
And I found my free vintage of notes.
Cause I know that you done that.
Change.
First of the two hundred by two hundred.
Well, I'll make a motion to send section five, uh, six oh eight, total cooperation to the township board for their approval. Through, uh, this, uh, total operation ordinance handed to.
Does it have to go to the county?
Thirty, what is thirty?
Wait a second, that.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. On which continued discussion are we handling down here?
Now, we're just doing some calculation.
Math or uploads?
Yeah.
It's good to test it.
The visual. My head's tired now.
So, so we are going to send this up with Daryl. With, and he can explain exactly what's going on.
Yeah.
We're not really changing what we had in August twenty twenty.
I mean, can we get a clean copy, just that number one?
Yep.
Where it says, it's just that parcel with a line through it.
Correct.
Can we just get parcel removed and?
I can do that.
Per acre. I mean, I think everything else is good on that.
Okay.
And I think that's all we, we really need.
All righty. No more discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. So. Right, sent to. Sent to the board. Right, funny that funny, right, yeah. Okay, um. I am going to, this one, this one, this one. And you're gonna get a clean copy for Daryl to have.
I will have, yep, yep. I'm gonna be here all day tomorrow with the elections.
Right.
I'll probably do it then.
Send to. Okay. All right, um. Number two on the agenda is the, I call it pool fence, I think it might be swimming pool spa. And hot tubs. Has anybody really had a chance to, to look at this? The file on this one's not as thick.
No, it's not. None at all.
Okay. Section six point.
Although I still don't know which one we're really looking at.
That one point one oh three.
Yeah, but which copy?
I have got a amendment from February.
Sixteen?
Of, yes, of twenty twenty-one. I have notes back from. And Ron, and I have notes from Kerry Bondi from March, would have come after that.
Yep. Yes, that's.
Um. I mean, I, I took, before we get too far into this, I thought at some point, there's a state regulation on spas and pool fences, and I don't know why ours should be any different than this.
I think it might be a national.
Yeah, there was a national, I S P S C.
Right.
But it doesn't really address. I think what we're looking at here, I think it addressed more of the piping and all that crap.
Okay.
Associated with that. I kind of pointed out, but I.
I thought it addressed fence heights and everything.
Well. I didn't read that much, I just brought it up because I didn't know that was something it's supposed to look at.
I know, uh, I know Jimmy Turner was looking at that really, really close and doing the homework on that right there.
Cause he.
I, I wish he was here to speak to that.
Yeah, honestly, that would be in districts. I told him I can't. I'll do that one.
Yep. I was, I was.
Yeah. So we have in the, oh, in my book. Fences is broke out in one oh two, just point one oh two. How did I get the idea that fences was part of this? Maybe I'm mistaken, it was just.
No, that's, that's, it's, that's where he's got this under, uh, well, it's, he's got it under six point one oh three, which is the swimming pool portion, which comes back over here. And what he's got is basically a combination of our fence ordinance that we have, the one oh two and one oh three.
Yeah.
And what he gave us is the one oh three. Like I said, we have not worked on this one at all or discussed it for, uh.
Right.
Going back through, uh, and you can see where Bondi's got some of her notes where this thing had been kind of merged together.
Yeah.
So why, why were we merging it together? I mean, cause until we change it, the old ordinance stands, right?
Correct. And the old, old ordinance is, is in place.
So is there something the matter with the old ordinance?
I, I think the old ordinance, when it speaks to swimming pools, spas, hot tubs, one of the things was, um, uh, a minimum of a six foot high fence around those where the national code speaks to a four foot high fence.
Yes. Cause if you go to our fence ordinance, it's a four foot fence, you go to their pool ordinance, and it has the six foot, uh.
But I, I think it, it's got something to do with a four foot high fence, um, like if it's an in-ground pool, but if it's an above, above-ground pool, you need a six.
But if it's an above-ground pool and you build four foot of fence, you got six or seven foot.
Well, that's if you're putting the fence on the pool.
Yeah.
Yeah, see, this, this is a fence around the perimeter of that, and see, that's where, under the general standards, we've got, it's a four foot fence. It's what's currently in our ordinance. And when you go to the pools and hot tubs, under the G, it has a six foot high fence. And I, I remember some of the conversation, cause, uh, it was a Mary Dupree came in, and it was back when Dragway had some event with the lollipops, and people actually stopped and scaled her fence and got her pool, even though it was, it was like a four foot fence or six foot fence. I don't remember what they scaled it anyway.
Right. Were you, now, they all scaled a four foot fence in a hurry, and we started to go.
That was like ninety, that was like ninety-four, ninety-five when they did that? Was that Leroy?
Yeah, something like that. There was always somebody getting back. All the high school kids. Except they were shocked when, uh, we weren't home and they jumped in the pool. Like, no, like Anderson, you know, had a little talk with them, and he stared.
Uh, that's what you need to have a nice guy, and you're in overall, but one cross.
Well, see, uh, six foot, four foot's been contentious forever in, in the township.
Yeah.
That's what the only change.
Look, and everyone can say five foot on all of them, huh?
But, uh, what about the draft that Ron put out for February sixteen to twenty-one?
Yeah, well, that's where he's got the four foot.
Or he's got his dry shot.
Yeah.
Or get rid of that.
Well.
Or the option.
Yeah. Cause, yeah, he went through, yeah, the, the one point oh three, under the six and the nine, where he's got, uh, six to change it to a minimum of four feet high. And then, uh, the new portion under that was number ten, if you're looking at that, one that he gave us back there.
Right.
Sixteenth that he gave us in May of two thousand one. Number ten, that portion is new, it's not in our, cause it's temporary and seasonal pools. Uh, may require a one-time permitting and inspection approval and can be reestablished in following years when reinstalled. It's kind of like if you had a, a pool, and you put it out every summer and took it down and everything, you had like these blowups ones. And so for, for the night, you gotta have a, a fence for that.
Have to go back to the same spot. You have the one time, then the one time spot over here. You don't say may, you're ready to.
Well. No, no, it's, I'm, I'm stating when this was handed out. See, I, I date all my paperwork when I get it handed to me. That's where you have to store it, and that's when I, that's why, when I say may, it was the month of May of twenty twenty-one. So.
And the draft also crosses off beneath the ladder and securing upstairs, and I can't read that. I think that they should be capable of being secured, locked, or that's required.
Part of that might be part of the legal issue, cause at one point, the township took the opinion back in the, what was it, late eighties? That we didn't require a fence for swimming pools, because raison de la township had the requirement for a fence. Some people bought a house down by Ida, and the back wall of the house was one side of the fence, and then they had the fence around the backyard, and the swimming pool was in the backyard. The people bought the house, and they had the misfortune that they had a young child that went out there, went up the back porch, climbed the fence, or climbed the ladder, whatever, and drowned. But they then, uh, through the process sued the township, because there wasn't a fence on four sides of the pool. And it was, and a lawyer had an opportunity to make some money or to challenge something. And so then it was, we, a lot of communities had the opinion, we don't require a fence, so then that way the township's not legally responsible or liable. And that was in place for quite a long, then this, when it kind of came through, I think that's when the pool, uh, fence.
That was also on the patents too, wasn't it?
Yeah, at one point, I mean, it required.
Had a requirement on patents and lifelines.
Yep. And so when you had that, let's say, so you require it, and somebody's had that pond or swimming pool for four years or something, and the fence isn't repaired or whatever, or something happens, then the township's liable because they didn't inspect it or they didn't enforce it. And so if you don't have it on the pool, you're not legally liable. That was where that conversation was back then. Since then, we do have fence work. Cause the state of Michigan doesn't have a fence all the way around Lake Michigan.
They don't?
They don't, or they do.
Yeah. So the one that's in place yet, until we make changes to it, it has a six foot fence.
Correct.
Our number six. Well, number seven, swimming pool under direct water, so he's trying to get rid of number six here.
It's a, a change to that four foot. You know, and, and seeing that we've had some good discussion, and looking at this, I would, I know, like you said, Jimmy, or Dan, and said Jimmy has, has done through this pretty hard, cause he's got a pool, and he got hope on this thing. And so I'd like to hear his opinion when we do the discussion on this thing before we approve it.
Well.
The daughter's neighbor who said she had, their neighbor's put in a pool, and he said they had to jump through all kinds of things. They put their pool in behind their house, so I don't know what, between him, them and the whatevers. What, what all the problems were, when she was not real happy with, uh, how long it took to get a pool.
So.
Did you see?
Didn't, no, we.
Just making a suggestion that.
Um.
We don't make any decisions.
Temporary. What, on this draft also, is temporary seasonal pools. So if, if my, uh, friend could show up and we put up a pool for the weekend and fill it with water.
Yeah.
We have to have permit to do that?
Sounds like it.
Yeah, by this, cause it, it doesn't have.
But it's signed in this one.
Yeah, cause, you know, there's.
That's what he wanted to add.
Yeah, that's what he wanted to add, and like, let's say, is this a two foot size swimming pool, is this a four foot size? Is it, you know, three foot? Is there, is it twelve foot diameter, is it twenty four foot diameter, is it?
Eight foot.
Yeah. And so in all restrictions, this temporary should have something that states what, you know, they have to require a fence for, like, say, a blow-up pool that's two foot that you bought at Walmart for a hot weekend.
Yeah, to me, I think that's intrusive myself. I, I just.
Yeah.
I, 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 I think we had somebody that was very good at, at looking for things to create something to do.
A one-time permitting and. A one-time permitting and inspection approval. That can be reestablished.
We have people that have a hard time trying to get somebody to come look at their property for a legitimate.
Yeah, building.
Permit, building permit and stuff like that. And we're gonna worry about swimming pools?
A blow up eight foot?
Yeah.
A blow up eight foot swimming pool that I run to town and get a tank of water to fill. To me, that's just, that's, that's where I was, some of this is kind of coming back. I was pretty frustrated with that way back. Um, I, I agree, maybe we should have Jimmy here.
Yeah.
He, and, uh. I mean, if you want to table this and put it off till next month and make sure, I'll let him know that we, we saved this for him because we want to make sure his concerns were. I really don't see anything matter with the old one. Um.
If, if anything, you just want to take the old one and you simply amend it to a four foot fence.
Well, that would be my thought. If you want to change it to a four foot. Now, I'll, I'll be honest, my mom and dad had some friends that had more money than I ever worried about having. And we used to go to town and go swimming in their pools. And I don't never remember there ever being a six foot fence around the pool, in-ground pool. I mean, there was always this kind of four foot fence is kind of.
I think four foot fence is standard for in-ground.
Yeah.
At least I think that's what the national.
And then most above-ground pools are four foot. So they got their natural four foot barrier. So I'm not sure where this, I'm not saying it's a bad idea. I'm not sure where the six foot came from. So if, if a big portion of this was to amend it to four foot, maybe perhaps because that matches the state code, I would be in favor of that. And I agree with you. I'm not sure, I mean, all. I would too. So I, I'm looking for a motion.
I would move to table the pool and fences until the December meeting.
Do I have a second? All right, we got two seconds.
Which one's first?
Huh?
Who goes first?
Dan. Okay, um, any more discussion at the moment?
I was just gonna say, I know where there's a pool in a large university that's got about eight foot wall around it. People went down there and turned somebody's furniture in the year and they were scaling those women at night. I thought it was a cool idea. You thought you were gonna have that pool yourself, that place was. You can scale eight foot wall in one place.
Of course you can. The Marines teach you how to do it.
They teach you how to burn council there too.
No, we didn't have it long enough.
All right, um, so. So we've got a, a motion and a second to table this until Mr. Turner can be here to add his, um, knowledge and concerns to it. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion is carried. All right. Seems how we didn't add anything to the agenda. Let's have our second citizen's time. Jared? Sorry, we couldn't have anymore.
Nope, nope, I appreciate it. This is, this is more knowledge than I've gotten over the last two months.
Leroy gave you some excellent advice. I would, I would follow up there and I would, the seller, the title company.
Uh, it's just unfortunate, cause I don't want to go back. I didn't want to put something up there or.
Have the option to do that.
Well, you might be able to have the option if you could pick up another one of those parcels.
Pick up one of them parcels in the front that has it, then you could do it.
And that's where getting the parcel numbers and then going down to the registered deeds and you can pull up each one of those.
Get a copy, but about a chip off. You go home and then look at it and make sure that there was something that, you know,
whether or not it had something for the deed restriction, the reference that, that was part of that open space. Uh, for going through, it's on the flip side, uh, for the realtor disposal. If you're buying a parcel that you can't build on versus the price of a parcel right next door to the same agency that you can build on, there's a difference in the price. There's a difference in the value. And so if the realtor didn't dispose that or the seller didn't dispose that, you know. I don't know what else. Some realtors are no better than use car sale, but on the same note, it's, it's, it's real money that you've got.
Fuck, absolutely. You are, might have right. Because they might have sold you with the idea that you could build on it. They might have provided you with.
Yeah, right. It's gonna take some bull and teeth to figure it out.
That's why I say you put on the.
Yep.
Your information, how you, how you have your intention to do, whatever you feel is right.
I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Anything else for citizen's time?
I think this is the first time you had a request regarding the open space reservation question.
I've never heard of that term until recently.
I bet you wish you'd never heard.
All right. Any commissioner comments?
And, uh, does the independent newspaper, uh, cover twenty-sixth of twenty-one? I've got it here. That was on, shared on a couple Facebook pages today. The title says, don't keep fish that cook the water. Michigan National Resource Commission approved new regulations on Thursday at cover fourteen. Regulations are in effect now. Catch and immediate release regulations now are in effect on all bodies of water in the industrial waters state name area in London Township, Monroe County. The six hundred eighty acre property was acquired by the Michigan Department of Natural Resources earlier this year. So I took a picture of this, shared on Facebook, a couple of our community pages to ask if it wasn't that open to the public. And there is a sign that gets on the property. It's got hours stated that it's open, but there's a resident that made a comment that have come invited during those hours, the gates are closed. So I don't know who to follow up with on that to find out what's what.
I, I think those gates are staying closed.
Yes, the DNR is keeping them closed. Like, cause I, I know I, I live, my home is right down the road from there. We'd actually called them about it. Yeah, they want, they want to keep the vehicles out of back there, so they, what they said.
Some people can walk back in.
They're over there tonight. Yeah, you can walk in there. I know there's times that they were open, uh, you know, they were back there doing work. I mean, they've always been nice, orderly, eh? Castles in back in the car. Maybe they should post that a little bit.
I believe some similar case, because someone did post it with us last week saying, well, it's, it's such, you can't go, but just go around the gate. And I was like, no, I'm not gonna tell anybody.
When they purchased the property, they said they were going to have six parking spots. That you could park there and walk back in. There wasn't anything stating that you could ride back in. That was in negotiation. And what's, how long is that thing? Oh, four or five years?
Yes.
So that'd be what I was still on the council board, what I was trusting. That's when they talked about that. They said it was, the intent was not to have anything. They would have parking spots up on, on each end. They're supposed to have an entire length of the other end and then so you could walk in, but no.
Part of the challenge is they finally closed on this property late in the summer. And the fact that they told everybody that was open for hunting or fishing and they weren't ready for it. You know, they, they did get some signs up, but I don't think they got the signs all around the front of the property. Cause they got people that hunt our property that says that they're seeing people on our property. And so they don't have it completely posted. So basically, they let the horse out of the barn before they were ever ready to put a saddle on this thing.
And you had.
Yeah. So, no.
We're gonna get people back in there wandering around thinking, oh, this is, it's open for us now. Let's do our thing.
And that's, that's exactly right.
In some way or form. So what's our next step to clarify?
They, they really weren't ready and they let it out.
It's not township's problem.
Yeah, it, it really isn't our problem, you know. But it'd be nice to have some clarification for the township citizens to know what's going on. So now, so it's all part of it, both sides of Darling Road, right? So is there fences on both sides of Darling Road along, or gates, I mean, along with the gates up on.
Both sides. Over Carlton. Mark Brandt's son's house, there's a gate there that goes right across to the other gate, to the, the large portion of the quarry side. The north side, they do have signs around there, you know, you're leaving state property or, you know, very hunting or no shooting beyond or something to affect that. They've got little white signs over there. Yeah. So, but whether or not they've gone through the woods or what, and then there's, there've been the question whether or not they would maintain the fences. Kind of like to keep the people in that property and they said, no, because they don't want to impede the wildlife. Well, the deer clear the fence all the time.
Right.
So who would be the best contact? You know, almost I like to see a man, I want to, okay?
The DNR.
The DNR is a big, big place.
I don't, I don't have a name.
Um.
Certain department or.
I'd start with Monroe County and work up from there.
Yeah, cause the fellow that was kind of doing, one was on pressure, one was over by GOC or something.
I don't know where they're.
Maybe Mr. Brandt would have some input on it.
Better, maybe talk to Point Muller.
Call the website, the state of Michigan, Natural Resources.
Oh, I, I just called it. They're like, yep, it's open.
Who did you call?
The general number on for the state of Michigan DNR.
What do they call us? Crystal Waters or something?
Yeah.
Well, it's open to water.
But they did. It is a catch and release news. So that's what made me think it must be open. They're putting in the newspaper to catch and release, obviously.
Catch and release.
But the thing's closed. It says, you know, it's locked off. So it's like.
They said there, it wasn't going to be.
Did you see that? Would you see that?
I could hit.
Oh, what about, yeah, me too. Um, what about what?
Yeah, that's what they've been doing. They've been talking over it. You're in chats all the time?
All right. That, that'd be no gunshots. It's not for beer.
No, I, I've heard gunshots.
I have too.
They're probably just.
There's one.
Any other commissioner comments?
Yeah, he, just a second. I'm just pulling up on Facebook, I've got this article here. Um, cause Mark Brandt did comment earlier. He said, there's a sign on the gate about hours, I think nine to four daily, but not sure. The DNR stops every day to open and close. They hang around most days too. The catch and release sign is at the gate also. And somebody posted a picture of Dan Kidd, says, every time I drive past the gate during these hours, post down the sign, the gates have been locked. And the sign says, like a crossbar coming over the driveway, site hours, four AM to eleven PM, public hunting area. And that's it. Like, okay, so I go with my gun now and that's it.
Can be locked because you're supposed to walk only anyways, right?
Okay, I'm just imagining people going in there with their guns, just poking around that doorway. It's like, okay, well, so it's fair game. Let's do this.
It's, it's the DNR. The DNR, both the rules are the ones in charge of that property.
Yep, we have no liability to this point.
Weren't necessarily prepared for what they had done.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
Cause at one point you're gonna have to, have to sign in boards.
I found my page of three pages of changes to the existing ordinance that was last updated in twenty seventeen. And it started as soon as the ordinance got.
Yeah. Back where I found yours, I've got three pages of stuff.
I'm looking at it. I gotta start.
Okay, yes.
Which ordinance was that?
All the ordinance.
The ordinance first.
Okay.
Yeah.
One, one we've been working on because it starts off in article one with the durations and themes and. There's all kinds of stuff that's not.
Well, it's good.
Yeah.
That's questionable.
It's nice to know you both got it.
Yeah, he's got more of them. He caught more than we.
I guess if nobody else, you got any commissioner comments, Darryl or Doug?
No, sir.
I think one thing, when we get done with these that we have in front of us, we probably should go back and change the ordinance that tells us that it has to go to the county planning commission.
Correct.
There's no county planning. So.
Well, it goes to a county commission.
Goes to the county commission. So.
But there's no plan.
I mean, my point is, is we sent a couple of ordinances that we felt we've worked long enough on. We wanted them behind us. We sent them to the board and they're still not done because we still have in this ordinance book that is supposed to go onto the county.
Well, it's, it is supposed to go onto the county.
Yeah.
But we can send it.
The county said that all they do is give it to an engineer or something like that. And when, when they're done with it, they give it back to them and say it's fine or it's not fine. So they need to send that back to the township board and say it's okay. But that process is created by the county. It's not created just by the London Township sort. That's a county requirement. There is still, there is a county forum that you fill out the process.
Cause they, they review it and they then compare it to the neighboring townships to make sure it's somewhat germane. Like you didn't come up with something that's gonna be intrusive on their neighboring townships and that, and that's. And then also whether or not it complies with some state law, different things that, that they review it. And then once they did, they usually then give it to the county planning commission. They then approved it and then it got sent back to the township. Now, but the county did what? The county planning commission now, the county commissioners have to do it. So it's, the engineer looks at it, he signs off, they have a voiceful, but a, or the, you know, consent agenda and away it goes.
I, I, I do have that for myself first too.
Okay. Well, to me, it just seemed like, uh.
Well.
Some extra what to do by now.
Well, it's done for that reason.
Okay.
To back extra was protecting London Township too from Dundee Township and all this. Cause actually if we're changing something that borders one of the townships, we're supposed to notify them also. I mean, if, if we're, we're doing a zoning change in section one, puts up the extra township, we're supposed to notify them to see if it's going to affect their zoning on the other side of the border.
Kind of like when, when, when some township, put the don, down there in the south corner of their township, folks in here on township were really quite upset. And they didn't have a say about it. That's a different scenario.
All right. Then the last thing I wanted to, uh, share, um. I did reach out, talk to Mr. Gerard. He got the letter that we sent. He said that Manniken Smith has all the paperwork. He said they would not be at this meeting because they wouldn't have it back yet to have the site plan changes and the hydrologic, I think that hydrogeologic. Yeah, the discharge.
And hydrogeologic can change it. Was this the, the discharge in the, from the center?
So he said Manniken Smith said they would have it sometime this week. He expected, but he said they wouldn't have it back. So we could probably look forward, you'll hear, that may well be on the agenda in December. So. That is all I have.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Support.
Sounds good.
No discussion on that. All in favor? Say aye.
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 Oppose? See, motion carried. Thank you, folks. Doug's supporting.
And if anybody would like to come and visit us tomorrow.
I'll be here. You open at six, right?
We'll be here at six.
Where's the tablet?
Dr. Kim.
And it's only Dundee Community School, but.
Yeah.
Kim's gotta go in and get it. I don't know.
I, I, I'm just wondering how many months she needs to get that, cause I'm gonna bring that up next Monday.
Yeah.
Um, I, I'd be tired of people talking about that.
That's very fair. I thought the same thing.
Yep, me too.
Well, we, I think the board approved.
The board did approve.
Like maybe five, six months ago.